Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Douglas School Committee meeting for May 5th, 2021.
Exactly.
And I call the meeting to order rate at 7:00. We're gonna make your own lifestyle.
However, come, bank of mom and dad is not happening.
Glad to be back in the building. We're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance for the flag outside.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep. We do have student representatives from the middle school. Francesca Sheena Carriello and Kayden Howard.
Good evening. My name is Francesca Sheena Carriello, and I'm here with Kayden Howard. We are both sixth graders and a part of the Douglas Middle School Student Council. As the spring season arrives, the middle school has been very active with event planning. The week before April vacation, students participated in Spirit Week, which included many thrilling activities such as a spring-themed Jeopardy game, as well as a hallway decorating competition. Each grade was given a movie genre, theme, and chose a movie to create a fun-filled collage in the hall. In addition, students worked together in a collaborative opportunity to further their knowledge of gardening during a seed planting event on Wednesday. These flowers are growing and will be planted outside the middle school when they are ready enough to be transplanted. Currently, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. To show our gratitude for our teachers, we are celebrating with a new event daily. Over the course of this week, posters have been made with thoughtful messages, classrooms have been decorated with festive streamers, and roses with thankful notes have been passed to the teachers. Thursday and Friday, we have candy and snacks with appreciation messages added for all the teachers and support staff.
We are pleased to announce that track has started. Additionally, we have begun high school baseball and softball. We wish the best of luck to our athletes. Mrs. Finley's STEM club is also meeting after school on Wednesdays. Apart from this, students have been engaged in academics with several interesting projects. On the sixth-grade floor, students participated in STEM egg zipline challenge. Students were assigned to build a contraption that could safely transfer an egg from the top of the zipline to the bottom. In geography class, sixth graders started their South American unit. Throughout the course, the capitals, culture, and history of the continent will be taught through hands-on entertaining activities. Our seventh graders have been measuring large objects using scale factor. They have also been building shoes with limited materials and stem. In eighth grade, students have finished their iXL challenge. Across the month of April, students raced to see who could answer the most questions using the iXL platform. We are expecting the results on Friday. In Ms. Miller's civics class, students are currently learning their rights and responsibilities as members of their personal and national community. On the iCivics website, students worked on an amusing game where they separated their freedoms and laws in several categories in order to learn which apply to them and how to properly convey their rights.
Thanks and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have been really busy. Moving on to the public comment and communication, if anybody has anything. Seeing none. Does anybody have any old business? Any new business? And we'll hand it over to the superintendent.
Hello, everyone. Welcome back to live and in-person meetings, which is great. Just want to piggyback off of what the kids said, that this is Teacher Appreciation Week. And we've said it before at these meetings, I'm so grateful for the work that our staff has done and our teachers have done. We've seen the slogan, not all superheroes wear capes, and that's so true of our teachers and the work that they've done this year in this unprecedented time. So just a heartfelt thank you to them, each of them, for what they've done and their hard work during this pandemic, and just how much we appreciate them. So just a public thank you. Next, a quick little COVID update, three things. I sent something out. We've seen some new guidance around defining close contacts, where now the guidance has changed that anyone within three to six feet will be notified, but only kids three feet or less, or adults, will need to quarantine. So there was some new guidance that came out. There was also some guidance around wearing masks, and if you're vaccinated, you can be outside without a mask on. We've reached out to other schools. Within a public school setting, we're still requiring at all times people to wear masks on school grounds, in the building, and at school events. The MIAA has backed that up for student athletes for games and events, that spectators and kids will also have to wear masks. So although publicly, the governor said that if you're outside and vaccinated, you don't have to wear masks, the MIAA and Douglas Public Schools are still requiring people to wear masks while on campus or on school grounds. And then the last thing is pool testing. It was supposed to expire the end of April, the free testing. They've expanded that, extended that throughout the summer, so we're going to continue to do our pool testing of everyone who's available or has signed up for it through the end of the school year. I sent something out, and we've had some more people apply for it, I think after we had that positive pool, that flagged pool last week. The elementary school, we got some more people who decided to sign up. So we've had some more people sign up for that. Next on the agenda is the blueprint. Really happy and proud of the work this committee has done on this blueprint. This blueprint is the foundation of our strategic planning for the next three to five years. I just want to highlight members of the committee and their three months of dedication to this. We had teachers, administrators, parents, students as part of this. On the committee, we had Cindy Socia, Neely Urquhart, John Bell, Josh Romano, Sky Bamba, Christina Watson, student Michael Tool, Jess Finley, Eleanor Ogier, Christine Blashford, Lauren Nussudi, Megan Zabicki, Erica Brown, and sophomore Zofia Cherria. We had a good representation of people to put this together. We met over a three-month period, and we started off by spending some time looking at what is a strategic plan, why do you need a plan, and what's the importance of a plan, just to have that same common language. We then transitioned and we did a SWOT analysis. SWOT analysis stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So we identified as a committee, what were the strengths of the Douglas Public Schools, what were our weaknesses, what opportunities exist for us, and then what are the threats to implement those opportunities? We obviously knew that money was one of the threats. We started with that. Through that, we put those things from the SWOT analysis into different buckets, and we came up with improvement priority areas. And we identified five of them, which I'll highlight momentarily. In working groups, we came together and we began to put a description to each of these priority areas and discuss what we're looking for outcomes in them. And then we finally came up with strategic actions underneath each of these. So if you go to the actual blueprint, we have five improvement priority areas. These are the things we're going to focus our energy on over the next three to five years. We're talking about academic excellence is one of the priority areas. We're making sure that everything we do is focused around that theme of academic excellence and making sure that kids achieve and have the opportunity to achieve at a high level. We looked at community partnerships and the importance of making sure we're making those connections with the community. The well-being of all, focusing in on that social-emotional piece for staff and for students. We want kids to understand the importance of being good local and global citizens, and finally establishing a growth mindset. Those are the five improvement priorities. We, as a committee, identified strategic actions, and I have that back in my office. We're going to this summer with the administrative team, identify additional strategic actions. I'm going to ask principals, as one of their first faculty meetings, to work with staff to come up with strategic actions and do the same thing with their faculty, with their site councils. From there, we'll get together and identify three to five strategic actions for next year under these five improvement priority areas, and that's what we're going to focus our energy on over the next school year. And those strategic actions, some of them might be done in a month, some of them might be done in six months. We're really looking for things that we can accomplish in a year, and then every year we'll do that process again of identifying different strategic actions. So when people say, why are you spending money? Why are you doing this? What's your plan? What's your vision? It's here. It's established. It's be out in the public, and people will know about it, and it'll be completely laid out for people. So that's our blueprint. Again, this is just part one of it. The next part will come in October when I come to the school committee meeting with our strategic actions underneath these priority areas. Any questions on it?
I'm sorry if I missed it. Will you be working with the same people for those next steps?
So they've already identified, as part of their working groups, what they felt would be good strategic actions. We're going to do it as a leadership team, principals, assistant principals, Mrs. Keegan, special education. Then we'll do it with the entire faculty. So principals, one of the first faculty meetings with their entire faculty, will have faculty input. Then we're going to have a list of 15, 20 things under each of the improvement priorities. Then as a leadership team, we'll get together and say, okay, let's look at these 15 things. What are some things that we feel are the most important for us to attack this first year?
Okay. I think that's good. I think that's great, and I love, I love these different areas of focus. My favorite part of all of this is that the students will linger in ambiguity. Like, I just, I appreciate that phrase.
Yeah.
The world is not black and white. Like, it's very important for kids to be able to know about, you know, growing and stages and, you know, you know, see, you know, discrepancies and things. So I think that's great. I don't know. I think I just, if my two cents would be to kind of continue here and there wherever possible to reach out to the community about how those act, like what the action steps are and if they represent, because I still, you know, I still want to make sure that the community and the parents who are choosing to send their students to Douglas are like, yes, this is what we want to see, because at the end of the day, I feel like it's the moms and dads who are saying whether or not their students are staying here or going elsewhere. So yeah, I don't know if there's just some way to keep that.
I'm hoping that through the site councils, which have parent representation on them, we get some parental input, but that's a great idea to open it up and maybe do a forum for families to have the opportunity to add some input in September.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can't see.
I know.
All right. Next, our school lunch program. This year, the U.S. Department of Agriculture extended their summer feeding program to schools. It started in the fall, then extended for the entire school year, in which kids had the opportunity to have free lunch every day, which was awesome for our kids, gave them the opportunity to come in and be fed and not have to worry about paying for lunch. This has been extended throughout the 21-22 school year. So any child who wants to eat in school can do so for free. And this was something that was extended by the U.S. Department of Agriculture to schools, found out about it right before vacation, maybe happened during vacation, that this has been extended. So just wanted to make everyone here aware of that.
Quick question.
Yes.
My son decided to take advantage of that, right when they started to go back full-time, and he was denied lunch. Why is that?
I, I, can you begin to, I have no idea.
So did they, like, stop it and then start it, or they, it's just been ongoing?
It's been ongoing, hasn't it?
Because I had to put money into his account.
Yep, it's been ongoing since the beginning of the school year.
I think the only things that they were charging for were the extras.
Yeah, the second lunches. Yeah, he was denied his first lunch, so.
He was denied his first lunch?
Yeah. It was a while ago, he dealt with it, but I just assumed that the program stopped, so I guess it didn't.
Nope. We'll find out.
Well, it's, it's already been dealt with, but I was just curious.
Anything else on the school lunch? Summer remediation is part of our SO2 grant, and now the governor's spending about $70 million to communities to offer a summer remediation program. And we're still going to offer our extended year for our special education students. This is separate from that. It's a one-month program starting in late July, early August. It's going to run for four weeks, Monday through Thursday, from eight to 12, with about 10 to 15 kids per grade level. And we're really focusing in on skills-based. So what are the skills kids need from grade one to be successful in grade two? We're going to look at where those deficiencies are, and we're going to spend that month over the summer, working with those 10 to 12 kids per grade level to build those skills up. This is free for parents, it's at no cost, and it's something that we're going to use out of our SO2 grant. We sent something out to staff to see if they're interested. We already have about a half dozen faculty members who are interested in being, in teaching this program. We still need a few more people. We're going to do some recruiting over the next couple of days, but we should be sending out letters to families within the next month to let them know that their child was selected and that they can be part of the program. So that'll be coming out shortly.
So it's done, the children are selected?
Correct.
If a parent has requests it, can they?
We, well, look.
Could they, could they, not saying that there would definitely be a spot, but if there are parents who might be out there listening?
Correct.
Who had some concerns and don't get a letter, can they?
They can absolutely call, and we can see what we can do. Again, this was for the remediation program for kids who are struggling and have those gaps. So we're going to identify through some of our benchmark assessment and data that we're doing, we're going to identify the at-risk kids in each grade level, start with them. And then again, you might not have all 12 kids who say, sure, I want to go. Some families may choose not to, some families may be on vacation. With that said, if you weren't selected, obviously you can call, we can see what we can do. And then the last piece is the second reading of the homelessness and foster care policies. If you remember, Mrs. Urquhart presented this to the committee a couple of weeks ago, and basically, when we had our audit done, we had our foster care and our homeless policies lumped together, and we needed to separate them to have two distinct policies. So that's what she did, and you should have both of them in front of you, and this is the second reading of the policy. We need one more before we can implement it. And that is all I have, unless people have additional questions.
I have one more question.
Sure.
So with regard to the COVID-19 update and just generally being back to school now that they've been back full-time for a little while, could you speak a little bit to, I know there were concerns about, like, high schoolers having some anxiety about returning and maybe some behaviors in the younger grades and sort of transitioning back to this routine of five days a week. So could you just give us a?
Sure. So we'll start with the younger, we'll start with the behaviors. I've talked to the principals, I've seen some teachers. The typical behaviors that you see in a normal school year did not exist when it was Cohort A and Cohort B. Kids behaved like angels. As soon as you blended the two cohorts, it was like we were back to our pre-COVID days with the typical behaviors in the elementary, the middle, and the high school. Talked to Mr. Romano last week, and he's like, you know, I forgot that this is what happens a lot of times in school. So some of those behaviors have come up. Mr. Romano did a really nice job in late March, early April, meeting with the kids. He did grade-level meetings, and he met with them to address some of their concerns. A lot of the anxiety from what he shared with me was the fear of the unknown. What's going to happen? What's it going to look like? How long are the periods going to be? What are we going to do? We're used to only having, being in school two days a week, now we're going to be in school five days a week. He was able to address a lot of those concerns through the meeting. There was still that half dozen, more like a dozen kids we knew we were concerned about, and Mr. Romano's dealt with that. We've actually seen an increase in kids who were remote now wanting to come back. A lot of it's happening at our elementary school, where it started in every day, every week, Mr. Bell's getting one or two more phone calls. Now that everyone's back, we'd like to come, bring our kids back from remote to in-person. So we're seeing that, that increase. But he's done a great job dealing with the anxiety. A lot of it was the unknown, but the behaviors are just your typical, everyone back in the building behaviors. Spring in the air, everything.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I just speak to something about that, too?
Sure.
One of the things that I observed myself with having three kids in all different grades is, for example, my son has an AP, and it was, it was a very difficult transition going from hybrid to that, because you really weren't in school a lot, and a lot of these AP, this is just something for the future. It's very difficult to do an AP class remotely and hybrid and all that, and they just yesterday had a, had their final exam. And it was, it was challenging, because you came from a place where you had, like, that luxury of being at home, and now all of a sudden, you're in school, and now you're testing in school and taking a major test. And I have to guess that there's a lot of kids that were taking those APs that, it's been a tough few days. It's been a tough transition back, but it's like, it's, they're in school, and I think that's a good thing, but it's, I think it, you know, it wasn't easy for some kids after they really were like, wow, like, being home wasn't that bad.
It was a tough transition. We'll just speak here to the high school and to the AP, where they came back, they were hybrid or remote, they came back for two weeks, we had a week of vacation, we came back to a full week of school, then they started AP exams. So it's a lot of transition for, for kids in a short period of time.
It was like they had to just jump in and get wet, and there was no, like, you know, getting your feet wet. It was like, you're getting wet, and maybe that was a good thing, I don't know, but I just, it feels like a typical school year now. All of a sudden, in the middle of, well, in the beginning of May. So, and I have to give a credit to, like, everybody that made it happen. I mean, it's, it's great that we, as a community, were able to make this happen, so thank you.
You're welcome. And you go back and forth, you know, I've talked to other superintendents. Some high schools went back a few weeks earlier, some high schools went back a few weeks, and they're each facing their unique challenges depending on which week they, they came back. So some schools came back the Monday after April vacation, they had a week, and they transitioned right to AP exams. We had the flexibility to kind of pick where we're putting our MCAS exams. Some schools are doing them in early June, some schools decide to do them right after April vacation. So imagine coming back remote, in-person, vacation, and then diving right into exams a few weeks later, so, yeah. Not easy.
Anyone else? Thank you. Moving on to the school committee and subcommittee report, accounts payable.
Okay, so I do have the full documents here, if anybody didn't get a chance to look at them and would like to. I signed warrant 40, school year 21, dated 4/1/21, which was four batches totaling $13,161.04. Warrant 41, school year 21, dated 4/8/21, which was nine batches totaling $280,628.44. Warrant 42, school year 21, which was dated 4/15/21, which was eight batches totaling And warrant 43, school year 21, dated 4/22/21, which was six batches totaling $51,573.52. And there was nothing unusual.
Thank you. Moving on, before we move on to the consent agenda, I can't believe it's already this time, but it is somebody's last meeting, and I have something from the Massachusetts Senate.
Oh, my goodness.
It's an official citation for Kelly Grady, "In recognition of your three years of dedicated service to the Douglas public school system and its students, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate." And with that.
My goodness. It's already.
It's the citation I ever, oh!
Well, thank you.
And I told you this, three years would whip by, so thank you for letting me talk you into coming out of the school committee. And I'm, I'll be forever grateful that you jumped on here with me, and I can't believe that it's over already, and all your thoughtfulness and your addition here. The kids of Douglas are so lucky to have had you, and the teachers, and everybody.
Well, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Let me second that as well. Kelly, it's really been just an honor to work with you. You're, you're such a genuine person. Your care shines through for the teachers and the students all the time. You don't talk as much as I do, but everything you say is worth 20 times more because it's not better thought about. I really, I really appreciate your wisdom, and it's been an awesome, awesome time to work with you. Thank you.
I think, the only thing I would like to say is, I have actually enjoyed the last three years, and Lisa's right, we did this as a joint venture. We got roped into this together. But I would say, I had been asked to consider running multiple times, and I said no multiple times, didn't think that I had the background, the experience, the time, the patience. That one I probably didn't have, but I would encourage anybody who is even considering it to take the chance and do it, because you learn a whole lot about the community and you get to see a lot of the good that's being done. And, and it really is, it's definitely worth the time. I would just suggest anybody who's got it in their mind for the next couple of years to consider running.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just thank you, Kelly. And I know you had your three years here, but your service started prior to that.
Definitely.
As well. And I know I've only worked with you for a year, but the past year, you had a pandemic, started, you did a superintendent search in world record time, you negotiate, world record time, you negotiated six different contracts between remote, hybrid, in-person, back-to-school, all there. And you did it all with grace, with dignity, and keeping in mind the best interest of kids, the community, and staff, and that's not always easy to do. So I thank you for that, and I learned a lot from you, too. So I really appreciate your insight, your input, your comments, and your feedback.
I am not shy about giving comments.
And I want to say thank you as well, Kelly. It's been great working with you, and Paul is correct, your service started well before you got on the school committee. But, you know, your class act and your sincerity and your sincere interest in, you know, the school district and the students has been, been wonderful, and I really appreciate everything that you've done.
I appreciate it. I have learned a lot from you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda, the March 10th, 2021 meeting minutes. If nobody has any issues, I'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes, March 10th, 2021.
Motion made by Kelly.
Second.
Second by Becky.
It was Heather.
That was Heather.
Oh, sorry. I don't have to do a roll call vote, right?
No.
Just all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's going to take me a minute.
You don't have the little yellow box pop-up to show you who said what.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the April 7th, 2021 meeting minutes. If nobody has any issues, I'll be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes, April 7th, 2021.
Motion made by Kelly.
Second.
Second by Heather.
No, that was me. I'll raise my hand next.
It's not the same when I have your names right under your faces on Zoom.
Second by Becky. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the January 20th, 2021 executive session meeting minutes. Nobody has any issues, I'll be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the executive session meetings dated January 20th, 2021.
Motion made by Heather.
Second.
Second by Becky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the March 1st, 2021 executive session meeting minutes.
Right, this is nitpicky, but it says Commission Riley instead of Commissioner Riley.
I will speak to Mrs. Tibbetts and have her make that adjustment.
There's no other. Is any other issues? Not, looking for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the March 1, 2021 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Heather.
Second.
Second by Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to the school business and operations report.
Okay, well, I was hoping to have some transfers for you this evening, but we will have them for the next meeting. So, and a little bit more about the school lunch program, in addition to what Paul had indicated. I'm working right now on projections for FY '20 that I will be bringing forward, I hope, on March 19th, just so we can have a look at the preliminary projections for next year, given the new information with regard to the, the program expending through the entire year next year, as far as what we're estimating for revenues and expenditures as well. So also, I have for you this evening, the FY 2020 end-of-year report audit from Melanson. You see that in your packet, and there were no findings, in fact, I had to look for a while to see. Let's see, we found, it's in the second paragraph at the end, "We found no instances of noncompliance in applying these agreed-upon procedures." So what they're referring to is each year DESE issues compliance requirements for the end-of-year report audit, and it's six pages long in tiny print. So that's what they have to go by, and they can't even start the audit until they get the DESE audit compliance guidelines, and that's what they're referring to. They also no findings at all, everything went fine. It's one of the many, many audits that the school district has throughout the year. I'm glad that one's over. The Student Activity Fund audit should be coming out next for the middle school and the high school. And I'll be presenting that to you when I receive it. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, could I comment on the lunch part? I don't want this to be taken the wrong way, but because we got to experience a little bit about what the lunches are like at school, I do appreciate that we were able to feed everybody that wanted to be fed, and people that normally wouldn't take advantage of the lunch program, I'm glad that people hopefully took advantage of it if they were able to. But I know it's free, but I'm just wondering, like, who chooses like the food? You know, obviously it's not organic, and I'm not looking for that, but I'm just wondering, there's a lot of the same things every week, like the same hamburgers, the same pizzas, a different variety of pizzas. It just, I'm just wondering, I thought like years ago, under the Obama administration, they redid some of the school lunches, and I'm just wondering, did we go back to the way it kind of was? Like, who does all the lunch things?
Okay, so, actually, I'm glad you brought up, so two points. So the first point that you made, that is correct, I believe it was in 2010, that they vastly changed what we're allowed to serve students in school lunch programs. Okay, for, for health reasons, and it was under the, it was Michelle Obama, under the Obama administration. So that was required to be implemented by all school districts across the United States of America. But that being said, to your second part of your question, certainly it's the food service director in, and also working with her kitchen managers, and also what students are and are not eating within those compliance guidelines that drives the menu, in addition to cost, of course. Because we have, we do not have a great deal of money, you know, in the school lunch program. So it's driven by, by cost to some degree, also what students, you know, prefer over some other things, in addition to, but actually the overriding thing is the guidelines.
So, I mean, is that something that people would be able to discuss or meet on, or, I don't know, get some feedback from parents? I mean, I'm just, I guess, I don't know, I feel like some people that may not have the ability to give kids very nourishing meals, and they're looking to the schools, I'm not going to say I'm disappointed, but I just, I feel like we could do a little better.
Well, as far as the nourishment goes, that's all USDA. For instance, and I'm giving you some real examples, they are required to give even certain amounts and even their definitions of what's considered a vegetable. We got written up about six years ago, and this is a true story, because our three-bean salad had green beans in it instead of a lejeune, and we got written up for that. So it is extremely strict. You can actually go online and look under USDA, the food, what you're required to serve and what you're not allowed to serve, and it is extremely strict. But then, so you start off with that very strict parameters, and again, it is, it is for health reasons and nutrition. So actually USDA is starting off with health and nutrition.
And I don't want to belabor it, but like, you know, like cereal bars, just like really high sugar, like, just, you know, grab-and-go food, I, I get it, but I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of like the people that, you know, they, like I said, I just feel like we could do better, that's all. I just don't know if there's a way around the menu, or if there could be some more menu options, or, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know how to phrase all this.
As I am leaving, the wellness committee will need a school committee member to join. And part of what we were talking about as that began, and I'm not sure what'll happen with Neely, you know, I'm sure there'll be some reorganization, but there is a wellness committee. And I was the school committee member on, and they are supposed to have one, plus anybody as a parent or community representative. And that was one of the things that we were discussing under the umbrella of wellness, was because the food service director is a part of that.
That's correct.
So I don't know who will join that, but it would certainly be a way, if you have concerns to.
Okay, that's, that's perfect. I think that's, that's exactly where I was kind of leading this discussion.
And another thing that I forgot to mention as well, and again, it, it comes down to finances as well. So we receive, most school districts, it receives what's called entitlement dollars from the federal government as well. And that's driven by the numbers of students that we feed. So it's actually entitled, we don't receive any money, but it's entitlement dollars at the federal level. So those dollars are used to, to get commodities, and this is foods that USDA has available that all school districts with school lunch programs utilize their entitlement dollars to get commodities as well. So the menu is somewhat driven by that as well. So say turkey is a very, usually the turkey dinners, you know, people like the turkey dinners, depending on whether or not they have it available under the commodities. Now, another thing that happened to us unfortunately, right before, you think the COVID was enough, but actually the humongous warehouse that held the commodities for all the school districts in the region had a huge fire, in addition to everything else. So that drove up, so we did not have those foods available, so that also impacted. So there's a lot of different, different things that are part of a school district program that are very unique, that aren't really, it's not like any other program, and extremely regulated. Every single aspect of the school lunch program is extremely regulated.
I don't think people realize that, Courtney.
So, no, I can tell you for a fact they don't, you're absolutely right.
Nachos on the menu for the elementary and primary school because it's Cinco de Mayo, and let me tell you how many kids told me, we didn't get our nachos, we had pasta instead. And I was like, something must have happened, because there's lots of rules with what you can serve and when and all that stuff.
Well, sometimes it's the availability and what's available, but even the wheat pasta, that was a requirement. And some kids don't like wheat pasta, but yet we were required by USDA that we had to offer wheat pasta. So, yeah, there were a lot of regulations that were changed at that time, a lot of regulations.
Well, I appreciate that.
And they're looking, they're looking at it again to see maybe they might lighten up a little bit on some things, but again, it's all driven by the federal government.
Okay.
But that was a good point, thank you, Kelly, about the wellness committee.
Any more topics not anticipated? No need for executive session?
Do not.
Our upcoming meetings are May 19th, where we will be reorganizing, June 2nd and June 16th. And with nothing else, I'll be looking for a motion from Kelly to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:39 PM.
Motion made by Kelly.
Second.
Second by Becky. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.